Start recording, can I, can someone say something just to make sure that the audio is in the recording? Because that was the problem yesterday, so could someone just say something quickly? So that I can see.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, we're good, thank you, okay. So, both, everything's being recorded, so. Yeah, so as I said today, we're gonna start with. Superposition, like I said, let me get that note open. Which is two clicks away, there we go. So, superposition is another analysis method, it's the first one that we do in, in chapter four. Um, and it's pretty much just that each source has its own effect on whatever thing you're trying to calculate. So if you figure out each of the effects separately from each of the sources. Um, then you can um, figure out the exact value of what you're looking for. So we're gonna do that example like that. Um, I wanna uh, I wanna say I've not done any superposition practice, so this will be my first one. Um, and we're gonna start with four point eleven, four point five, I just don't, maybe we'll do that after, I don't particularly know what it's asking for, it's not really a superposition question. It's just doing something weird. Let's start with four point eleven. It says, use the superposition principle to find what we need. And let's see how it goes. So everybody can see my screen, right, every, it's all good. You can see the question? Maybe not? Maybe so?
Yeah, we can see.
There we go, thank you. Um, so, okay, so the first one, you're super, use the superposition principle to find I not and V not in this circuit, so what's I not? I not is here and V not is here, of course. Um, okay, so using the superposition principle, I'm gonna refer to my notes here. Right, so what that means is that, okay, so essentially, we, we look at each of these uh, sources. And we turn off all but one, and then calculate what we need to calculate. Okay, you only actually turn off the independent ones though, so the dependent one is gonna stay no matter what, right? And the um, the voltage sources are replaced with a short circuit, so they just, you, you literally just like erase it, and it's just a, it's just a wire that connects like that. But the current sources are replaced with open circuits, so essentially, you like cut the wire here and cut the wire here. Right, because then it'll be open between these two nodes. So, let's start with um, keeping the current source, so let's say, uh, I'll just say, I don't know how to, I don't know how to separate it, so I'll just say. Six amp source, or six, six amp source is this, so that's what, that's our next calculations here. So the circuit's gonna look like this, it's gonna be a uh, current source here, resistor like that. This will be another resistor, here will be our dependent current source. This will be that. That will look like that. Okay, so notice, I got rid of this voltage source because we only keep one source at a time, one independent source at a time, so this is a forty ohm. And this is a ten ohm, this is a twenty ohm, this is thirty volts, which is gone, and this is four I not. Okay, so. Okay, what is, uh, I guess we wanna calculate both I not and V here, okay, well, V, oh no, we don't know V, we know I not. No, we don't know I not. Okay, we're looking for this. Current like that, and the voltage here, pretty much. Well, I guess the voltage here minus the voltage here. Well, the voltage there minus the voltage there, we could do, could we do nodal? Yes, we could do nodal very nicely for that. Yes, so let's just do nodal analysis, I guess, so that's a node, I mean, unless you, anyone sees a faster way to do it quicker. Although I don't particularly because of this dependence source, so I think I'm just gonna do nodal. So, that's a node, that's a node, and that's a node. Right, this is our. Ground. So then, we wanna find, uh, this is V one. This is V two, so we wanna solve for each of these voltages. So. Um, I'll just start, this was a six amp source, right, so, okay, what, what currents are, uh, what currents are leaving, well, negative six, so for this, for V one. What currents are leaving, negative six is leaving, and then, uh, this is forty ohms. So this is gonna be V one over forty, so plus V one over forty. Uh, and then plus V one minus V two over ten. Um, yep, that's that. Um, equals zero, that's all the currents. Then for V two, we want, well, what's leaving, so V two minus V one over ten. Then we have negative four I not, right? But, remember, I not is this here, what is I not? I not is V one minus V two over ten, so it's negative four. V one minus V two over ten, so just to be clear here, I not equals V one minus V two over ten. And that's something we know. Right? Oh, hold on. One second, I think I left something downstairs, one second, just realized. Sorry, give me one second. I thought I left the oven on, I did not leave the oven on, just checking, okay, we're safe. Um, so, where was I?
Adam, quick question?
Yes?
Uh, for the thirty volts uh, source, um, this first part, you're just uh, turning that off, and the second part, you're gonna turn six amp one off, right?
Yeah, that's right, so this is like the first half, and then you do again for the next, yeah, that's right.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So then, okay, our next one is going to be, that was four I not, minus four I not for this one, and then we're gonna also have. Just plus V two over twenty, equals zero, okay, well, now I just need to solve this. So that's going to be, I'll do it like this, so it's gonna be one over forty. Uh, plus one tenth V one. Plus um, negative a tenth V two equals six. And then, so, negative a tenth. Plu- uh, minus four tenths. Yep, V two plus a tenth. Plus four. Tents, oops, plus a twentieth V two equals zero, okay. We can just plug this into a calculator. And I'll do it on my actual calculator now. Let's give it a try. Um, this is, oh no, hold on, I guess I gotta, I can't do. Can I do something that complicated? Yeah, I can actually. So, one over forty plus one over ten. And then this is minus one over ten. Um, oh wait, hold on, we have, I realize I did this wrong. Sorry, this is my first time using this calculator for this. I have to do it again. One over forty. And it's, yeah, plus.
It's just one over eight, that one just goes to one over eight.
Okay, well, I already typed it in, but yeah.
Okay, nevermind.
One over ten. And then, six, and then, this will be fi- negative five tenths, so negative a half. Okay, and then this is um, eight to ten, eleven twentieths? No, yeah, eleven twentieths. They're all positive, yeah, eleven twentieths, zero. So I got, V one equals one seventy-six, V two equals one sixty. Uh, sure, I don't know. Um. Yeah, I, I don't know, let's, let's, let's just go with it, see if that's good, so. Uh, we were looking for what, V not, right, so yeah, so let's, so V not prime. V not prime, as in the first edition of V not, right, based on this first step we're doing, which is, which is the six amp source, I should do the different color. With the six amp source. You know, I should use even a different color, there we go, that'll be better. Um, is, like, so V not prime is the first of the V not entries we have, so we're gonna get an entry for each. Of the sources, of the independent sources, so we can say that V not prime is going to be, well, V not is this voltage minus this voltage, which is V one minus V two. So V not prime is, V not minus V two, that's sixteen. Okay, and I not prime is going to be the current across there, so it's gonna be sixteen over ten. Which is one point six. Uh, one point six amps. Okay, so this is our first s- set of values for V not, let me get it better. These are our first set of values for V not and I not, which is what we're looking for, now we have to do the, the whole thing over again. Um, but turning off the current source now instead of the voltage source, so I can just do um. Go just take another screenshot here, or I'll just redraw the circuit, so. Everything stays except the current source, and the current source is not just, it's not just a wire that goes across, this is like cut here and here. So in fact, this whole section goes away. So all I'm gonna have is a resist, a resistor. Another resistor, a dependent source. Nothing on the bottom, I'm pretty sure. Here, I will have a voltage source in some orientation, and then there's that. Mister resistor, that's thirty volts. That's thirty volts, plus minus thirty volts. This is I not, this is four I not. Um, V not is here. And I need, so, so notice, I, I, I left out this section, right, because we're replacing it with an open circuit. So this is gonna be forty, ten, twenty, so forty ohms, ten ohms, twenty ohms, okay. That looks like it's everything from the circuit that we need, yep, so now, again, we calculate what is um, V not and I not. So how can we do this? Well. Um, okay, we have two different, okay. First of all, what's I not? I not, um, well, I could kind of do this however I want, I, I feel like there's like easier ways than doing nodal and. The other analysis every time, because then you may as well do it, may as well just do that, but we have to use this. Is there a simpler way? We know the voltage here.
I have minimum. I was thinking of something, but then I realized that, that middle one's a, uh, independent current source. Otherwise, you could just send current division.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was dependent, but yeah, 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 it's, it's a, it's a. We don't know the current coming that way, I mean, can we do K C L here somehow and that'll help us, but we don't know the current leaving. Would the current leaving be? No, we don't know what current's leaving there, I, it looks like to me I have to do nodal again. Yeah, that's, I can't see anything else, unless someone has an idea, but, yeah, so. I just have to identify our nodes. And, so, um, this is V one, oops. V one, V two, V three, so again, sorry, I not is V one minus V two over ten. Okay, and, and V not is. V one minus V two, so we gotta figure out what V one and V two are. So, uh, we will do that by um, nodal analysis, so V three is negative thirty volts, we can see that right off the bat here. V three is negative thirty volts, then we can just do normal. Uh, K C L from here, so from V one. Uh, what's the voltage, the vol- I mean, the current, sorry, current leaving is V one over forty. Plus V one minus V two over ten, equals zero. And for V two, this is going to be um, V one minus V, uh, sorry, V two minus V one over ten. And then minus four I not, and then plus V two minus V three over twenty. Right, uh, and we know that I not is V one minus V two over ten. Minus four, V one minus V two over ten. Right, um, so. Well, this, one thing to, oh, this should be a bracket there, and that equals zero, um, if I. If I factor out a negative here, right, if I factor out a negative from this thing, it's gonna be V two minus V one. Plus, so that lets us, the reason I did that is because now these can add together. So this is gonna be, what's the V one for the first equation now, this is one over forty plus one over ten. V one plus negative one over ten. V two equals zero, and then this is gonna be, this is gonna be. So, this can rewrite, this can rewrite as. Five of that, or. One half of that. Right? That's why I simplified it like that, so then here for V one, so what do we have, we have negative a half. That's V three, yeah, okay, that's, so just negative a half, uh, for V one. Then for V, so I guess we have no, uh, no V three. For V two, we have a half plus one twentieth. And then for V three, we have negative a twentieth. Equals zero, okay, okay, so I will once again, plug this in. So this is, something, something. Well, I guess that'd be four, so five fortieths. So, five, oops, five fortieths, okay, uh, minus a tenth. Oops, again, I did in the wrong mode. Yeah, no, it's. Five fortieths minus a tenth. Okay, um, zero, zero. Um, oh, hold on, wait a second, yeah, and V three we know, sorry, I should have. V, V three we know, okay, oh boy, sorry, I'm, I have to get practice at typing this in, I realize now we have two unknowns, which is what we wanted.
Why does that V two equation not have the four I O portion?
So it did, it did, but I did a little simplification, so I should, I should write, this is what I had originally. And then this is what I transformed it to, so originally, it was V two minus V one over uh, ten. Minus four I not. Um, plus V two minus V three over, uh, over twenty. Okay, but then I know. Then I know that I not is V one minus V two over ten. And then I factored out a negative. So that this becomes. Five.
Hmm, okay.
Which is what I have. Right, so I'll just write that back here though. So that's what V not, and then, I mean, V two I had, and then I simplified it to this. And then. So this was. Five, sorry, I'm typing it in from the beginning again, five over forty minus a tenth. Um, is zero. And then it's negative a half. And then it's. A half plus a twentieth. Yep, and then that's equal to, because I know V three, right, so I, I know V three is this, I can move this to the other side, this is equal to, uh, what was that, one over twenty? Yeah, so this is gonna be one over, so. V three over twenty, V three we said was negative thirty, so negative thirty over twenty, which is negative three halves. So this is negative three halves, okay, I got. V one equals negative eight, V two equals negative ten. So now I can find again what I not and V not i- are, so I not double prime is V one minus V two over ten. So, V, V one minus V two over ten. So that's two over ten. Which is one fifth. Okay, and then V not double prime is. V one minus V two, so negative eight plus ten equals negative two. Nope, equals. Two. So I'll just write that, equals two. Okay, so then now, from here, we can figure out what actual V not and I not is, so V not is V not prime plus V not double prime, so that's. What was V not prime, V not prime was sixteen. Sixteen plus two is uh, eighteen, okay, and I not is I not prime plus I not double prime. So I not prime was one point six. And one fifth is zero point two, so this is gonna be one point eight amps, let's check that answer. This is four point eleven, unless someone can do it faster than me. I'm gonna try, so four point eleven. Four point eleven, uh. Yes, one point, yeah, it's off by zero point zero one for some reason, but that's okay. Yeah, the, it is, it is right, it's the right answers, okay, good, there we go, so I just did my first uh, superposition question. Any questions? Um. There's probably easier ways to solve, other than just using nodal analysis, because. Then you can just use nodal analysis to begin with, right, you could just do that, and that would work totally fine. And you'd find everything you need. I think it's either that, that's, that's the point, and we're just supposed to learn superposition right now, even though it's not technically, like, maybe we need to learn the concept for later? And it's good to do it now?
I, I think it's because I, you should be able to uh, simplify it, I think you could have added the forty and ten ohms together.
Uh, for this one here?
Yeah.
Forty and ten, yeah, yeah, I could have added forty and ten, yeah, okay, I see, and that would get rid of a, one of the nodes. Yeah, and would that voltage be the same?
Uh, no, you just, I think you find the current, and then the current multiplies ten ohms, or.
The current would be the same.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Yeah, because they're in series, I see, okay, yeah, the current would be the same. Okay, yeah, that would. How would you find the current? It would be the current K C L, so you'd. If we combine this here, if I take a picture, I'll take a, take the circuit. Move it down here. If instead of doing what I did, I just took this, took this um, thing and combined this into a fifty ohm. Fifty ohm right there, and this is just a wire, then we lose V one, this will be V one, this will be V two. And this becomes that, okay, then how do we find the current going this way, or, or whatever way, so the current would be V, well. Uh, just current divider, no, but with the variable, does that work? Yeah.
Think you still to use nodal, and, maybe, uh, I don't know.
But it would be, I understand it'd be with. Wait, but we only have one unknown here, so we can just do, it would just be K C L, I guess. Because it would be, it would be V one, well, what's the current's leaving here, negative four I not. But I not is V one over zero, I mean, V one over fifty. Or, or, sorry, um, negative V one over fifty. Um. Oh, sorry, but, so. So. V one over fifty, that's where that goes, okay, and then. Then this would be V one over fifty. Plus V one minus, V one plus thirty over twenty equals zero, so I could just solve for V one, and then I would find. I would find the voltage there, so then I could find the current in that direction. Let's see what that works, so, to solve for the voltage, this would be, well, okay, so what, what V one do we have, we have four over fifty plus one over fifty. Plus one over twenty. Um, V one equals negative thirty over twenty. Which looks familiar. So V one equals. Um, something. Four over fifty plus one over fifty plus one. Twenty, and I got negative ten for V one, is that what we got? Oh, for V two, yeah, yeah, for V two, yeah, I just changed the name of what I called V one, V two, so yeah, yeah, I got the same answer. I got the same answer. So, that's quite shorter, quite a bit shorter to do that, so yeah, let's look, let's look out for the next one, see if there's any ways like that to, to simplify the circuits.
For the uh, for that V O prime on the initial, how'd you get that value of sixteen?
Uh, this one here?
Yeah.
Because V not is uh, is V one minus V two. V one minus V two. Because it's the positive and it's the negative end, so you just take, and so we solve for V one minus V two, so, one seventy-six minus one sixty is sixty.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, let's try another example, uh, what's the next example, so we did this one, let's try fourteen. Uh, thirteen, I mean. I don't know why I said fourteen. That's. Here, review, no, not review questions, problems. Okay, number thirteen, right, yeah, okay, so use the superposition principle to find V not. Okay. So V not is there, what are the sources we have? We have three sources, so we're gonna have to do three sets of the calculations, so let's start with. Okay, let's start with, I guess, I'll get rid of this source, so remember, uh, current sources are replaced with open circuits, so this whole thing goes away. This whole thing right here. Goes away, so, I'll say with, with the four amp. The new circuit becomes, well, I guess, let's just, let's just, I'll just draw it like this, so with the four amp, that goes away. Okay, so let's calculate V not, well, V not is the voltage here minus the voltage here. Um. Okay. Voltage here is negative twelve.
When you have.
Yeah?
When you have multiple um, dependent sources, aren't you only supposed to use one? Like you cancel two out?
Yeah, you're right, so let's take, let's take that, that source there as well. Um, then I think it, you're right, thank you, so this goes away as well. So all we have left is just the voltage across this, it's just negative twelve. I think, voltage across this. Or do I just have to do one single loop, like a single K C L?
Uh, add all the resistors and use ohms law, I, I think, fine, uh.
That'll find the, I guess that'll find the current through everything, and then just.
Yeah.
Multiply by five, okay, sure, so adding all the resistors, I get twenty-three. If I added correctly, no, yes, twenty-three, um, so it's a single twenty-three ohm resistor. Um, so we want the current through that twenty, twenty-three ohm resistor, well, I is V over R, so twelve over twenty-three. Which makes me think it's supposed to be twenty-four, no, I guess not. Um. Which is twelve over twenty-three, so that's it, and then, now we know that, now that, now that we know the current going through, we know there's twelve. Over twenty-three uh, amps here, so going through, so then we can just calculate the voltage, so V equals, uh, well, it's negative. I R, so uh, twelve over twenty-three times five. So twelve over twenty-three times, whoops, times five. So this is two point sixty-one volts. Okay, so that's V, this is V not prime, V not prime, the first one.
Wait, my bad, can I just ask, why did you decide to call it negative? The, for the resistor, or you're just saying the negative to positive, sorry, the lower to higher end? The for the resistor, or are you just saying the negative to positive, sorry, the lower to higher end is uh negative?
Yeah, well, we're calculating this voltage, the voltage this way. Or hold on, yeah, yeah, sorry, we're calculating the voltage this way, but I know the current this way. Right, I know this current is twelve over twenty three, so you can, you can think of it just like, like. If the current this way is twelve over twenty three, the current this way is negative twelve over twenty three.
Right, okay, thank you.
That's why I realized actually the negative should be there. So the negative should be there, and the negative should be there, I just didn't click then put the negative in for some reason. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. So negative two point six one volts, okay, that's our V not prime, now let's look at our next one, so. This one is definitely going away, so this is replaced with a just a short circuit, so it's just a straight line there. So it's gone, and then we'll just take one away again, let's just take this one away, so this one goes away too. So this is for the uh also this, actually, this is technically the four amp, so what I just did was the. Uh twelve volt, so that's that's the section, so now for the four amp, as in that's the, that's the only thing that's left is the four amp. So. Calculate V not prime again, well, there's no voltage source, so what do we know, well, we know the current. Uh these two, so the current here is four amps. Eight ohm resistor. Can I combine? I can't combine. I can't combine these two, I was gonna say, can I combine those two resistors? I cannot, and I also can't combine those resistors, so it looks like I can't. Can I do current?
Uh the. The five and ten, you can add.
Um. Oh, yes, they have this node, okay, yep, I see, okay, so good, so then this is just fifteen. Um so now I can do current division, so I want, what am I looking for, V not, so I'm just looking for the current that's going down this way, that's all I care about, the current that goes this way. So that current, so I. Whatever, I not is going to be, so I not is the current this way, right? So actually, I guess I'll erase that, maybe I should draw new pictures, I'll do it next time, so that one is going to be the other, so this is the current we're looking for, so the other resistance. Over the sum of the resistances. Three um times the current from the source. Okay, so that's thirty thirty two over twenty four. Sorry, thirty two over twenty three. Um and so since that's the current coming this way, the voltage. V not. Double prime is going to be um positive. Um. Thirty two over twenty three times, oh, times, not times fifteen, times uh five. Yeah, times five. Okay, and then that's. Thirty two over twenty three times five, so this is six point nine five seven. Uh volts. Okay, now we have our third one, so you know what, I'll I'll do it different, I'll put another picture up for this one. So for this one, all that's gonna be there, all that's left is the two amp, that's all that's left. Uh so this goes away, it's replaced with a open circuit, so that whole thing goes away. This is gone, it's replaced with a short circuit, so all we have is this, and now we just have to calculate the voltage across there. Well, it's going to essentially be the same thing, I'm pretty sure, as the last one, except. Uh yeah, it's gonna be the same thing, I mean, kind of, because now we combine these two resistors. So those two resistors can combine into thirteen. Right, yep, thirteen, so this is a single. This is just gonna be a single. Um thirteen ohm resistor, so I don't know, I'll put it, cause I'll put it here, or I guess I'll put it. In this spot, this is just a thirteen ohm resistor. Thirteen ohm resistor. Um and now we want the current that's going to that thirteen ohm resistor. So what current, what what is the current, uh well, there's two amps coming in, and then we can just do the current divider, so the current coming this way. Right, I not. I not is the other resistance over the sum of the resistances.
Uh, could you do ten parallel with thirteen?
No, I. Should I?
Uh.
It is in parallel, but. But I think this is, this'll be, this is what I need, I need the current going through that.
Hmm, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, no, yeah, you're right, you're right.
So it should be, yeah, twenty over twenty three, which can't simplify, so that's I not, so then. That's the current coming this way, so then the voltage, V not triple prime is uh I R, so twenty over twenty three times. Uh ti- not times thirteen, sorry, times five. So I got four point thirty five volts. Okay, so then V not. Is V not prime plus V not. Uh V not double prime plus V not triple prime, so that is. Uh V not prime is negative two point sixty one. V not prime double prime, I mean, is six point nine five seven. And plus four point thirty five, okay, so let's see if this works. Negative two point sixty one plus six point nine five seven plus four point thirty five, so I got V. Not equals eight point seven volts. Let's check that. Number thirteen. Um. Yes, we're good, four point thirteen, eight point six nine six, yes. That's exactly what I got. Well, close, but yeah, okay, good, so there's that question done too. That's number thirteen, so we did both of these now. So just boom, boom, okay, fifteen, we're we're not gonna do all these questions, cause very, I mean, very soon, it's probably gonna be not superposition anymore, so. I don't know how many are left in superposition. But. Yeah, we'll see, so. If I go back to the thing. Yeah. So if I go back here, this to the question, this was, what are we doing next, I fifteen? So I take two pictures. I don't know why they always had those just massive laptop icons. When was this book written, I'm I'm not quite sure, but. Not anytime recently. Uh just checking, I'm still recording, yes, we're good, okay, oh, I noticed, before I used to say, when I'm recording, CPU like twenty four percent. And now it says CPU seven percent, cause I got a new CPU, so. All right, cool.
We upgrading, we out here.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. Um, okay, so for this question here. And I'm gonna also have a the discussion chat open now, I didn't have it open before, so for the circuit, use superposition to find I, calculate the power delivered to the three ohm resistor. Okay. Um so. This node is sixteen, okay, so we can find the power delivered. Let's just start with finding I, okay. So to find I, well, how many current sources do we have, or just sources period, do we have, we have three, so we're gonna have to do three different steps. Let's start with removing the. This one, I guess, let's remove that and remove that, I guess. Okay. So with this one. This entirely just goes away, right, that's like, this this whole chunk goes away, and then this is just a. Short circuit, okay, so let's now calculate I. So, well, we can combine these two resistors into a single four ohm resistor, right? Um and then we have a four ohm and a four ohm in parallel. Right, we'll have a four ohm and a four ohm in parallel, if this is, I'm not drawing everything, but if that's confusing anyone, please tell me, and I'll I'll uh I'll draw it out fully, but. For now, yeah, so that's a four ohm and a four ohm in parallel. So then that's going to have a uh combined resistance of uh two, yeah, two, so this is, this is a two ohm resistor. Here, two. Uh yeah, two ohm resistor. But hold on, we need. Okay, and then we can combine that, and then I think we can just find, that'll tell us the current coming out here. And then. Yeah, and then we can, I think we can then do current divider, so so. Uh then this is equivalent to having just a four ohm resistor. Because it's two here, and then this whole thing is two in series, so it's just gonna be a four ohm here, right, so then, okay, now what's the uh current through here? Well, it's gonna be um I is V over R. So twenty over four, which is ten over two, which is, which is.
Wait, how'd you make it four ohms?
Five, so this, this black box combines into a two ohm resistor. Right, and then there was already a two ohm resistor here.
Wait. Oh, oh, cause you're turning that one, okay, are you turning that source off?
Yeah, this is off and this is off. Yeah.
Okay, and then that's a four and that's a four, so that turns into a two ohm resistor?
Yep, this is a four and this is a four, that's a two ohm resistor.
Okay, 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 got it, got it.
Right. Um okay, so then the um current is, yeah, is five amps. So that's the current coming out this way, so now I can kind of go back a step here, that's not a two ohm resistor anymore, it's just a four ohm and a four ohm. So. Then I think I'm allowed to do. Current divider now, even though there's still a resistor here, I I think, could someone? Tell me what they think, I I think I'm allowed to do current divider for four ohm, although it's just gonna be two point five and two point five. I'm pretty sure. Yes. So I'm gonna go with.
But.
Yeah.
Into resistor, so it's just all series?
Can you say that again, sorry?
Wait, is, you said that you combined them, like the the two resistors, so doesn't that mean the the whole thing's in series right now?
Well, I got, so these, yeah, these two I combined to find the current coming out of here, which is five amps, but now I'm gonna uncombine it, now I have, now I have a four ohm this way. And a four ohm here. Because I specifically need the voltage that's going down like this. Because that's what I'm looking for, I'm I'm looking for.
Okay, okay.
The current I here.
So I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure you're allowed to.
I'm quite certain I'm allowed to just say now I not prime equals two point five amps.
We'll see, if the answer's right.
Yeah, let's see, I say two point five because it's a four ohm and a four ohm, so since the resistors are equal, it's just gonna split it in half. Right. It's gonna be two A or. Yeah. I'm pretty sure, we can check that, I guess. Cause it'll be five times the other resistor over the sum, yeah, 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 it'll it'll just be half, so yeah, I not prime equals two point five, okay, let's, let's go with that, and let's see what happens, and if I'm wrong, then that's a point where we could have made a mistake. So let's look at the next one, so this was the um t- uh this was the twenty volt. That was left alone, so the next one we're gonna leave alone is, I guess, the two amp. Two amp is the one we're gonna leave alone, and then this one goes away, so I guess this one's replaced with a short circuit. Replace with a short circuit. So now we just need to figure out the current that's going this way, so what current, so there's there's two amps coming here, now how much goes down this way, how much goes over this way? Well. Let's see. Um. I'm gonna identify nodes, even though we're not doing nodal, I'm just gonna identify nodes here, that one, uh that's not a node, this one. This one. So. So exclusively, no, they don't share a node. Okay, the two and the four are in parallel, I see that, the two ohm and the four ohm are in parallel. So we could add those. And then, let's do that, I don't know how much that's gonna help, but let's just try and let's see what happens, so the two ohm and the four ohm have uh added together, that's uh one over four plus. Two two plus one over two, so two over four, so three over four, so four over three. So four over three. And I just used this formula in my head just now, the V uh V equivalent for parallel is the inverse of the sum of one over R. So four over three. Ohm there, this goes away, so this is our node now. That's our node now, and. This, no, it's still not in series. Although this and this are in series. Yeah, the four and the three over four, oh, sorry, the the three and the three over four, uh, the three and the four over three are in series now, they exclusively share one node, yes, they do. So I can just add that into a three plus four over three, so nine over three plus four over three, that's thirteen over three. That's thirteen, whoops, thirteen over three, that goes away. And now I can just do current divider. Yeah. So we just, we're just interested in the current that comes down this way, call that I not, well, I guess, can't call that I not, but. I mean, I, that is I not, yeah, that is I not, it's I not double prime, right, because I not prime is there, so that's that's I not double prime. Um, so that is equal to the other, the other resistor. Over the sum of the resistances, which is gonna be sixteen over three. Times the current from the source. Let's try that, three over sixteen times two, which is eight, uh three over eight, okay? I'll go with that. This was a thirteen over three resistor, I added one to it, which is sixteen over three. That's the other resistor over the sum, seems to work for me, let's let's, let's see, a little little bit guessing, but. Okay. Next one is, what are we leaving on, well, we're gonna leave the sixteen volt on, that's the last thing that we're gonna leave on, and what goes off, well, two amp goes off and the twenty volt goes off. So the two amp is cut, so this is just, and again, this is just a four ohm resistor here, right, so we can just forget it. Sorry, we can just forget about this. Um, so that's a four ohm resistor. Um and all we have left, you know what, I think I'm gonna redraw this one, so this is gonna be two ohm. And then a four ohm. And then a four ohm and the current source, so this is four ohm. Four ohm and two ohm. And that's all that's there, it's sixteen volts, so we're looking for this current down like that, that's that's what, that's our goal, that's uh I not triple prime. So that current is. You've. I don't know, well, we could find the voltage here maybe, no, could we find the voltage, I don't think so, okay, we can combine. Sure sixteen. Sure is negative sixteen.
I think you can just use the voltage, but when they say in parallel, voltage stays the same.
Yeah.
I think you can find the current.
It would just be. Would I just divide it by two?
Uh hmm.
I combined these in parallel, so one half plus a quarter. Is. So three or four over three again, I guess I, did I do that up here?
Uh, I'm just wondering, can we just do sixteen divided by three?
Sixteen divided by, ooh, yeah. Well, hold on, these, this is not in parallel, because this, this is a node. This is a node. Right?
Yeah, but but the voltage doesn't split in the parallels.
The voltage does doesn't split, or it does split?
Uh doesn't, uh that's not.
But but here, it it'll it'll, these two will split, right, like the whatever voltage, although have the same voltage, they'll have the same voltage, right?
Yeah.
So.
So just to clarify, we're just trying to find I, right?
The green arrow, the current on the green arrow, yeah.
The the green arrow?
That that's right here.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, so the red arrow on the diagram to the left.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Okay, so you could just find the equivalent resistance by, you know. Getting, doing this parallel thing, and then just adding it to the four ohm resistor, cause then they become series. And once you have the resist, like equivalent resistance, you find the current. Leaving the voltage source. And once you have that current, then you just do.
Oh, and then you do volt uh current divider?
Current divider, exactly, between the, in this case, it would be. Current divider, exactly, between the, in this case, it would be four ohms. And two ohms, but then and then yeah, since it's in series, it will be the same for the three ohm. That's down there as well, down that same wire.
This green current, it will be the same, that'll be just be the same current.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, that that's the principle here, you know, I'll do the calculations right now.
Yeah, sure, well, we'll we'll do the, this combines into four over three, a four over three ohm resistor, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then plus four. And that is our equivalent resistance, so therefore our current would be voltage, which is sixteen over that. So we got three, and then we're just doing current divider between two and four.
So that's that's our equivalent resistance. And then I'm gonna take our our current from the source is. The equivalent resistance, sorry, the equivalent resistance. Uh sorry, V over the equivalent resistance.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen over whatever that is.
I got three.
Three, okay.
Or no, sorry, no, no, it it's it was four.
Yeah.
No, yeah, three is the answer, yeah, yeah.
What was the bottom here?
Sixteen over three.
Sixteen over three?
Yeah, no, it's sixteen over sixteen over three.
Oh.
So then you'll get three as the answer.
Sixteen over three, which is three, I see, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so then once you do the current division, you should have one amp going down that wire.
Let's give it a try, so the, this is three amps going this way, so now we have to ask, okay, well, current divider. What current is going?
Yeah.
This way?
Yeah.
So that current is. So I'll call that. Negative I not triple prime, triple prime, triple prime. Um and so that's going to be. The other resistor over the sum of the resistors. I believe it's two thirds, times the current from the source. So that's a third times three, which is one amp. So I not triple prime is negative one amp, which is negative one amp. Okay, let's add it all together, so I not is I not prime plus I not. Double prime plus I not triple prime. So that's going to be. Two point five. Plus three over eight. Minus one. Two point five plus three over. Eight. And this one. I got one point eight seven five amps. And let's take a look if this is what we want. Yeah, there we go, one point eight seven five. Good work done.
Uh uh I I got a question about this one example I was doing.
Yeah.
It it was just like, it's a superposition uh question. But in one case where I have to remove the current source, I'm given like this new simplified circuit. And I was just wondering if you can help me solve it, cause I don't know how to get the voltage that the solution is telling me.
Sure.
So if you could just draw like a, i- it's a small circuit, so it should be easy.
There's one more part to this question, okay, let's just finish this.
Oh, there is, oh, sorry, oh, we were done.
We'll do that and then and then, yeah, for sure.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the power, well, we know this current now, we know I, right, I is the one point eight seven five amps, so power. Equals I times the voltage. Right, um but there's a better way to write that, power is V, no, is IR squared. Yeah, power is IR squared, which we know, so one point eight seven five times three squared. Is one point eight seven five times nine.
Is is it I squared R?
Oh, is it? Should look at my notes. You're probably right. Let's see. Yes, it is. So it's I squared R, so this is squared, and that's just times three. So it's one point eight seven five squared. Times three, so I got ten point five. Watts, which. Which is the answer, okay, good, yes, so the question that you're asking.
Yeah, uh okay, so you could start by just drawing uh two rectic, like two rectangles side by side. Or actually a big rectangle and a line going through the middle. Yeah, and then just a line with the middle, okay. This middle line is actually uh an open circuit, so you could, you know, just kind of. Create like a little hole in there, yeah, just so you know, and then on the right side, there's a one ohm resistor. And a dependent source, which is VX over two. And then on the left side. Or sorry, uh that's a. Voltage source, yeah, dependent voltage source, just so you know.
So uh which side is the positive side?
Uh the top is the positive, the bottom is the negative, yeah. And then on the left side, we got a one ohm resistor. Uh and that resistor has the voltage VX, which is what we're trying to find.
Which side is the positive?
Uh it's no stated, okay, yeah, the top is negative and bottom's positive.
Okay.
And what's it called, and then we got the one, right below that, we have. A one volts uh independent voltage source.
Independent voltage source, I see, and the plus is down? Plus is up.
Plus is up.
So one volt plus minus like that. Okay, and your question, and so you're saying find.
It just had find VX, yeah.
Find VX.
Using uh nodal analysis.
Okay, well, first of all, I'll just I'll just erase this. Cause that doesn't do anything.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That doesn't do anything. Um except confuse us, so then using nodal analysis?
Yeah.
What are our nodes, we have a node here, we have a node here, we have a node here. So uh.
And then also a node in between the independent.
Yeah, right, right there, okay. So. Um actually, I'll set this as the ground. I'll set that as the ground.
Oh, not the not at the bottom?
Because what that lets me do is, well, what's this voltage, this is. This is V one, V two, V three, V one is one. Right?
Yeah.
And now VX. Is V one minus zero over one. And that's equal to uh VX. So V one equals VX, sorry, that's VX. Equals one volt?
Uh no, so the answer is supposed to be two over five volts.
Okay.
Which is what's throwing me out. I I mean, it is a YouTube video that I'm watching, so I'm not too sure, but I mean, they have a million subscribers, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, it's, okay, so first of all, I I.
Think you can start the ground up there.
Why, sorry?
Wouldn't the ground have to be at where V two is to get um V one equals to one, like one volt? It's, cause if you wanna set a node.
No, no, the ground wouldn't matter, as long as it's coming, if it's directly coming out of the source. Whether the ground is below it, it doesn't matter, it would, V one would still be one volt, I believe.
Well, but but within the. Because then you've got the dependent and the independent voltage source sharing one node. Which means they're technically like in series.
Uh let, yeah, let um. Yeah, we don't know that V one equals, no, no, this has to be here.
Oh, okay, you know what, there's a top comment. Saying that by nodal analysis, I'm getting four over three volts. So I think maybe that's the correct answer, and it's. It's got four likes.
Yeah, we do.
Man, I I gave you a really weird question to solve. Honestly, it's okay.
Okay, no, let's figure it out, let's figure it out, this, the 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 thing does have to be on the bottom.
Okay, so now that that's at the bottom. So let's start with our first uh, you know, uh KVL or at node V two, okay, so we would have V two. Uh minus one over one, so it's just V two minus one.
Uh yeah, okay, I guess so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then we would have V two minus, in this case, V three would actually be VX over two?
Uh yeah.
Right?
VX.
Uh okay.
Two, yeah.
And then that'd be over one, so that's not necessary, and that's all set to equal to zero. So automatically, just by this equation, we can solve it, because we can write VX uh or uh in terms of. Uh the resistor, the current in the. In the resistance, right? So in this case, yeah.
The one minus V two. It would be one minus.
Okay. I think where I made a mistake. Was I saw it as V one, what did I do, yeah, I did V one. Minus one. So, yeah, okay, so you see how you labeled V two, in my diagram, I had that as V one. So my issue was I had it flipped, so you see how you have one minus V two?
Yeah.
I had it as V two minus one.
Uh this was V two here?
Uh no, uh so just everything the way it looks, imagine I solved it exactly, I think I made my error. Uh now that I'm seeing it, is you have something as one minus V two for VX.
Yeah.
I had it V two minus V one, or minus one, so I think that might have to do with it.
Yeah, let's let's try to solve, let's see if it's getting, gonna get it, but yeah. This should be good, so one plus one um. Plus a half of V twos. Minus one, minus a half. One plus a half, so three halves.
Uh would it be minus one half? In that, in your V two, what, in the brackets?
Where would be minus?
One, so there'd be one, V one, V two, and then another. One V two, but then there would be all the two, the two negatives.
Minus negative V two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Two plus a half, so that's four half, so five halves. Five halves, so V two equals two fifths of three halves, so three fifths. Is that the answer?
He had two uh two fifths.
Two fifths.
Well, I mean, the top comment is saying that they got four over three volts, I don't know, honestly. But this does seem like it makes more sense than mine, he, I could I could send you the link to the video if you want. Uh but yeah.
Just DM it, you can DM it, sure, um.
Wait, isn't this just a node voltage? VX is supposed to be V one, sorry, one minus three over five, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's V two, yeah, 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 that's V two, and then.
That is true.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 VX is one mi- well, just to be clear, V one minus V two, which is one minus three over five. Which is two over five.
Yeah, oh, okay.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, there we go, awesome, thank you.
Okay, no problem, and thank you to the person there who said one through one minus, yes. Okay. Um okay, so let's move on to the next superposition question, let's take a look at what we did. Time is it, six fifteen, okay? Uh this was number four point fifteen, four point seventeen is. Uh okay, superposition questions, let's do it, and then maybe we'll take a small break. Just maybe if I may, I got to this question. Um so. Oops.
Is this one with uh dependent sources?
No. But of course, we probably should do one with dependent sources. See seventeen nineteen. Okay, the next one is, yeah, okay, let's do the next one. Let's do the next one. We didn't do seventeen, but we can go back to that after.
It's okay, uh for the sake of everyone else's time, it's fine.
Yeah. So four point nineteen, so solve for VX, okay. So we have two independent sources, so we're gonna have to do two different uh calculations. So the first calculation I'll do with, I'll just, I'll leave the six amp. So the four amp gets taken away, so this whole thing goes away. Like that. So we have to calculate now VX using that. Okay. Well. The. Voltage. We can either find, either find the current, okay, so six amps is going this way. And I think we just do voltage divider, uh uh current divider, I don't think this messes up anything. I don't think it does.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
So I I think I can just do the current going.
Okay.
This way, yeah.
Because I I'm just trying to remember the equation, so the rule is is two of them need to be in uh. Series with each other, right, for you to use voltage divide, or sorry, current divider, they both need to be in parallel.
Yeah, current divider, they need to be in parallel.
And in this case, they're not in parallel, cause that source breaks up the node. That dependent source.
That's true.
So let's just rewrite the the circuit, honestly.
Wait, don't you like turn on one and turn off the rest of the?
No, because it's a dependent, you you're, that's the rule.
Oh, I see, I see.
Dependence never turn on, yeah.
Thought that was independent.
This goes like this. Six amps, eight ohms. That's VX, oh, I missed this one. Oops. For IX. That's IX. Okay. So from here. Uh do we just have to do nodal?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
We just have to do nodal analysis? There's no other options, yeah? I think it might seem like it, so one node. Another node. Another node. I guess I will set. Um which one should I set to the ground, this one to the ground?
And then that just eliminates IX, so then wouldn't IX be zero in this case? Or no, sorry, that's only voltage, but current would also still be there though, right?
Uh it would be, yeah, it would still be, it would be this vol- negative this voltage over two. Right, negatives, if I call, if I call this V two, well, I guess I call this one V one. And this one V two, then IX. Is negative V one over two. Because the current this way is V one over two, so the current this way is negative V one over two. Right, so now. Now I can just write the equation, so for V one. Uh what's the current leaving, well, V one over two. Um six amps is leaving. And then also. Okay, we have a voltage source, so I have to, never mind, I should have put the thing down here, I don't know why I'm doing, trying to do fancy things. This should have been where the. Voltage source is, so. That's V one. That's our ground.
Yeah, but the way you were doing was fine, no?
Uh but I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to make a super node, I think this will just eliminate the super node. Because now I can just assign the voltage of V two, I know V two equals. Um for IX, which is negative V one over two. And I only have.
That that super node was only for voltage sources.
This is a voltage source.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's dependent, it's just, it's, but it still is a voltage source, right, so that's why. So then for V one. Now it's just a little bit more complicated, so negative V one over two, oh no. Ah, sorry, it's just V one, it's just positive V one over two, that's positive as well. V one over two, uh then negative six, then V one minus V two over eight. Yes, equals zero, and two equations, two unknowns, so that's just a two up there. Uh so I'll just uh. I'll just sub it in, I guess. So this is um. V one over two mi- well. Plus V one minus two V one. Over eight equals six. So um this will just be minus V one, move the minus to the front. So V one a half minus an eighth equals six. V one equals six over a half minus an eighth. So six over. A half minus an eighth is sixteen, so V one is sixteen volts. What are we looking for, we're looking for. VX, VX. Is V two uh uh V one minus V two. So I have to solve for V two, well, I can just use this fact, so V two equals two V one, so. V two uh V two, well, two times sixteen, so that's thirty two. So VX. Or VX prime is V one minus V two. V one minus V two. Uh, which is sixteen minus thirty two, which is negative sixteen volts, okay, there's our first. There is our first VX prime. Okay. Good.
I've got a quick question, can you create a supernode around a dependent source?
Yeah, yeah, once it has a value, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Pretty sure, once it has a value. Um, and then you would, yeah. So, okay, it's this here. Uh, so this just now was the six amp, so now let's uh do the four amp. So the six amp goes away, it just completely disappears and this is essentially the same question, I'm pretty sure, so. I'm gonna have to do. Yes, it's pretty much the same question. So I have to do nodal analysis again. So one node there, one node there, one node there. Um, this is our ground, this is V one, this is V two. VX is V one minus V two, or I should say VX double prime is V one minus V two. So let's solve for it. Let's do uh what we can assign, V two equals four IX. Uh, we also know that IX equals uh V one over two, V one over two. So this is four V one over two, which is two V one, same as last time. Now let's just do our uh KCL at V one, so that's going to be V one over two. Minus four plus V one over eight, sorry, V one minus V two over eight. Equals zero, again, I will just sub in, so this is gonna be two V one. Right, this is gonna be V one, so. One half. Um. But you know what, I'll do it differently. V one over two plus, this is gonna be negative, so minus V one over eight. Equals four. So V one equals four over one half minus an eighth. Four over one half minus an eighth with, which is uh ten point ten. Ten point six repeating volts. Then V two is two V one, so that's going to be uh uh twenty. Twenty one point. Uh, so what's one point six, ten point six repeating times two? Is twenty one point three 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 three. Three repeating. Volts. Um, and then finally VX double prime. VX double prime is V one minus V two, so ten point six repeating minus twenty one point three repeating. Is. Minus twenty one point three repeating is negative ten point six repeating. Good? Uh, so that's all we need, there were two sources, right, so VX. Equals VX prime plus VX double prime, so VX prime was negative sixteen. Minus ten point six repeating. So uh negative twenty six point six repeating. And let's check that. Scroll again. This is number one, yeah, negative twenty six point six seven, that's fine, that's correct. Okay, we got it.
All right, all right, can you just scroll back up on how you derive those three equations to the right? Right there, yeah.
These three?
Yes. Uh, yeah, so I was wondering, could you have gone and solved this uh nodal analysis question? Just with, you know, the basic um. Like the basic, uh, how do I explain it? So you you see the equation where you had V two, or sorry, V one minus V two. Uh, equals VX?
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that equation and just using the basic nodal analysis on each, on each node, could you have solved it without using that assumption that IX is equal to V one over two?
Uh, no, IX has to be V one over two, IX, this, this, you need this. Because you need to have a value for V two, this is a voltage source, so it needs to be assigning a value to V two. And that's that that equation I get right here.
Oh, so it's almost like you need to create, you need to find a voltage for the two ohm resistor? And you do that by rearranging or finding the relationship between IX and the two ohms? Okay, I kinda see that.
Yeah, so this is four, I know I said IX was V one over two, so this is two V one.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah. Okay, uh, let's take a few minute break, um. Thirty five, six thirty five, um, and then we'll keep going with some. Superposition, of course, anybody can send me any questions over the break that they want me to do. Uh, and uh we can do that. So let's uh, yeah, let's let's go, let's take a break, so AFK. And I will be back at six thirty five. Okay, back in just a little bit. Okay, guys, I'm back, hello, hello. Um. So I was thinking now we would do the practice midterm, I guess? We finished this question, right, we got the answer, yeah, yeah. So I was thinking now we would do the practice midterm, if that's good with everybody. Um, and we'll see if we can get that done. In about an hour. I mean, I I know there's the, there's the ECN thing that's starting at seven, seven fifty, seven ten, so. Um, uh, some people will probably leave then, but. Yeah, this will be recorded, so you can finish.
Uh, quick question, though. Uh, it's a bit off topic, actually. I want to know whether KCL and KVL applies to inde- or dependent sources.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, if you have a circuit.
So so if.
Deep plan source, yeah, yeah.
So if if you created a KVL loop, right, and there's a dependent source in that loop, it would still apply and it would still be present in the. In that loop with no issue?
Yeah, 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 like, do you count them as part of the things, yes, you do.
Yeah, and it would all still equal to zero? When you're cutting that loop?
I'm pretty sure, I would, if 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 I was, if I had that question in front of me, that's what I would do, I would count it just the same as a source. Just with the variable.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let's try, we can do. This is what I have, I have this thing called two O two MT. I guess that's the midterm?
That that's the one that I did as well, yeah.
Okay, so. Let's give this one a try. So I'll say this is uh. This is where the midterm starts. Midterm practice. Okay. So. Here's the first question. There we go, so a twelve volt source. Supplies a current of one point, uh, zero point fifteen amps to a bulb, calculate the power. Okay, so part A is calculate the power, power is VI. So twelve times zero point fifteen is. Uh, is uh nine fifths. I just said, I gotta just do everything in decimals, I guess, one point eight. One point eight, right, yeah, one point eight. Uh, one point, one point eight watts, sorry. The energy in kilowatt hours supplied by the source of the bulb is running for thirty days. Calculate the cost. Or calculate the energy in kilowatt hours supplied by the bulb if the bulb is running for thirty days. Okay, period. What is the kilowatt hours supplied by it if it's going for thirty days? Okay, so it's kilowatt hours, so I guess we gotta find how many hours are in thirty days, so. Hours is gonna be thirty times twenty four. Right? And how many kilowatts? Kil- as you just take the kilowatts and multiply by the hours, I'm pretty sure. So this in kilowatts is zero, uh, one, two, three. So one, two, zero point zero zero one eight kilowatts? Yeah. Zero point zero zero one eight kilowatts, so I'm, I'm pretty sure you just do zero point zero zero one eight. Are there answers for this test?
I couldn't find them. I mean, I could try looking again. Just to see if maybe they're hiding somewhere.
It's a little bit frustrating that they don't give the uh.
Yeah, I know, like, what's the point of them anyways? There's no answers.
So. Here, there we go, one point, oops, I wanna cover it though. One point two nine six kilowatt hours. So this is in kilowatts and this is in hours. So then now for um, the next part is calculate the cost of running a bulb if it's eight cents per kilowatt hour. So it's just eight cents times one point two nine six. So eight times one point two nine six is ten point four cents.
Uh, and just to clarify, uh, this, like, these topics aren't gonna be covered in the midterm, if I. The last time I checked. I I don't think so, uh, all this like kilowatt stuff and over time and whatever, I don't think that's gonna be on, I don't wanna make that claim, though. But just from what I heard.
Real, because it's like chapter one and it's not?
No, no, like, chapter one will be on it, what's gonna be from chapter one is uh. You know, like how there's those charge time graphs and the current time graphs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just changing it between those. Apparently that's gonna be on it, but not like this power stuff and how much it's gonna cost over time and.
Where did you hear that this, that that this stuff's not gonna be there?
Uh, apparently, I I know a friend who was professor told them what type of questions are gonna be on it? And of what chapter? And according to what he said, eh, for chapter one, the only thing that's gonna be in it is gonna be the current. Time graphs and the charge time graphs and just, you know, converting them.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know why this is important for me to tell you, because honestly. It's not even a hundred percent, so just whatever, we'll move on.
I sent the information on uh the discussions, like, I saw something saying that. Uh, the uh like first question's gonna be graph and then the second one's circuit reduction, third one is drawing circuit and then. Fourth one supersis- uh, yeah, superposition, I said it in the chat.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, so none of it will be this.
Yeah, well, I mean, we did the question already, so whatever.
Well, there is a part C, but. Okay, so then let's look at uh part D. Which is seemingly a different question, so for. Uh, discussion, okay. For the circuit shown below in figure one, calculate V naught, so V naught is where, here. What confused me when I looked at this before is what, what is this, this is a resistor that we don't know the value of?
Yeah, so I I I asked questions and apparently this rectangle just means a resistor, so just treat it like as if there, it's like a squiggly line.
Okay. We don't know.
But uh.
Any of the ohms, I guess we could find for a lot of them, we could find a lot of it.
Yeah, you could, you could. Uh, and I I feel like you're kinda going on a, on a tangent that I kinda went on, trying to solve this question.
Yeah.
It's not as hard as I thought it was, I thought I had to find the voltage at every single. Resistor, but that's not even, or even the resistances at every single resistor, but that's not even necessary.
Yeah, we just need to, okay, okay, so let's see.
You could just find a K, like, do a one loop, a KVL around that, like, any loop and you'll find it.
Like.
Yeah, and it really threw me, exactly, or even the loop to the right of it.
Negative thirty plus twelve plus V naught equals zero?
Yeah. Yeah, that's literally it, I mean, I don't know if this is right, though. Uh, but that's pretty much how you should call it.
That makes sense, yeah, there's no reason that that wouldn't work.
It really threw me off, I thought I had to.
I was looking at this too and I was like, okay, I gotta find the nodes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. That makes sense to me, of course, we don't know if we're right, so.
Yeah, I I took a look, I couldn't find any solutions anywhere.
Yeah, well, we'll just keep going. For the next one.
Uh, five, I believe.
So question two is this. Uh, use. Using circuit reduction. And well, basic circuit laws in the circuit shown in figure two, calculate V one, V two, I one, I two, and the power absorbed by the twelve ohm resistor. Okay, we've done a questioning almost exactly like this. In from the homework, so, okay. What do we, what should we find first? I guess what we can find first is V two. And V one, actually. Actually, V one would be the first one, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to combine all this into one resistor. And then we'll do um, current division. And then we'll know how much current is going down here, so V one will be the first thing we find, and then we can, I can also find. Uh, the current this way, which will be the next thing, so V one, V two is first. And then I one, I two is comes after, okay. So first of all, let's combine these two resistors, so it's gonna be one over eight plus one over twelve, so that's. Not something I can do in my head, well, three over twenty four plus two over twenty four, so five over twenty four, so twenty four over five. Maybe that's right? Get someone check that, if that's right. Guess I'll check it too.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Twenty four over five, okay, so that's a twenty four over five ohm resistor, thank you, and then I wanna add uh. Uh, six over five, so that's gonna be thirty, oh, this is gonna be thirty over five. That's gonna be thirty over five. So I'll replace that. Thirty over five, which is six. That's a six ohm resistor. Now let's combine here. Uh, one third plus one sixth is two six plus a three sixth, so six thirds, so two. Okay, that's a two ohm resistor, added with the four ohm resistor, so this is also a six ohm resistor. Okay. These can combine, they're in parallel. So us one over six plus one over six is two over six, so six over two, which is three. So these combine into a three ohm resistor. Yep. Which I can add to the one, so let me just be clear, this combines into a. Three ohm resistor. And then that makes this a four ohm resistor. And we can just cross that out. Well, I guess it's a loop that goes like that, but yeah, four ohm resistor. Um, okay, so now we can just say that it's six amps coming this way, so how much current is going down? Right, we can just do current division, so how much current is going down, the current going down to V one, so I'll call it I one, is the other voltage. Times, sorry, the the other voltage over the sum of the voltages. Sorry. The other resistance over the sum of the resistances, there we go, now I can say it right, times the current from the source. Other resistance over the sum of the resistances, two plus four. Times the current from the source. So that's four amps. I two is going to be the other resistance over the sum of the resistances. Times the current from the source, so two amps. Okay, so now we can find V one, V equals, so V one equals I one times R one, so V one equals. Uh, four times two, which is eight volts. And V two is I two times R two, so that's um. V two is uh, two times four, which is also eight volts. Okay, well, let's take a step back here, so let me just one more time say this. Go back, this was a six ohm resistor, this was also a six ohm resistor. Okay, so we have two six ohm resistors here, six ohm resistors, okay. We know the current coming this way like that is I two, which we know is two amps, so it's two amps coming like that. Now it's just another current division. Cause we're trying to figure out this current here, how much current is going like that? Well, since it's a six ohm and a six ohm, I can just right away tell you that the current coming this way is two, so it's one amp going this way, one amp going this way. So I can just split it right in half, so I one equals one amp. So now that we know that this is one amp. You know, this is one amp coming out that way. Uh, let's do another current division, another current division, so. Uh, we're just trying to find this current that's going down. So. I two. I two is the other resistor. Over the sum of the resistances times the current from the source. Which is six over ten, which is three over five amps. So that's what I got. I one is one amp, I two is three over five amps, V one is eight volts, V two is eight volts.
Okay, I I got a question actually about your V one and V two that you calculated. What I got was four volts at each one, not eight. And I I think that has to do because if if you check, uh, like, let's, for example, let's look at V one. So in this case, we have four amps going down.
Uh, we have four.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have four amps.
No, yeah. No, it it wouldn't it be uh, two amps going down to V one? Not four, and then two would actually be going to uh. Oh, no, so. I see what you did, you, uh, you, you. Added all of the resistances in series together when you were calculating the current division. You didn't just see it as the one ohm and the two ohms. On the V two and V one.
No, no, it was a four ohm, this turned into a four ohm.
Oh, and then you did the division from there, okay.
Four ohm, and it gives me the current this way, right?
Okay. Yeah, I made a mistake by uh, just treating, doing the current division just with the one ohm, not the four, like, combined, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so yeah, there's that, okay, any more questions about this one here? Think we're good. Let's take a look at the next one. So question number three, make it a little smaller. Um, in the circuit shown in figure three, use mesh current analysis to identify, well, identify your loops, assign clockwise loops. Write the mesh equations. Do mesh analysis to find V, VX. That's it, define VX, do mesh analysis to find VX. Okay. Well. I could straighten this out, but honestly, I think I'm just gonna do mesh, mesh, mesh. And there we go. There's the mesh. We do have a. Current source here. So what we do know is that, okay, this is I one, this is I two, and this is I three, I can tell you that I two. Or sorry, um. I three minus I two equals fifteen I one, the lowercase I one. Uh, and I one is just, uh, capital I one, so I one is capital I one. Right, so this is just capital I one. Yeah. So that creates a super mesh. Like that. Going in that direction. And we gain. Our first equation here, so this is equation number one. Now for the next two equations, we just need to do one for the super mesh and one for the. Regular mesh, so let's just do the regular mesh first, so it's gonna be negative eighty. Plus ten I one, okay, now. This is gonna be plus twenty. I one minus I two. Plus thirty I one minus I three equals zero. Good, and now for the super mesh, so we have negative thirty. Plus forty I three. Plus thirty. I three minus I one. Plus twenty I two minus I one. Okay, any questions? Did that a little fast, but. So tell me if you have any problems.
So that first uh, equation that you got was just from I one loop, right?
Yeah, it's from, it's from this current source right here.
So the purple loop?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because I, whenever you make a super mesh, you have to gain an equation, so that's the equation I gained.
Oh, sorry, no, yeah, I was talking about the second equation.
Oh, this here, this one here?
Yeah.
That's, no, no, that's, that's from this loop.
The green loop, okay, okay.
Um, for the first equation, you said it was a super mesh, uh, how did you determine? Uh, like, how did you determine it was a super mesh?
If there, because there was a current source between them, whenever you have a current source between two meshes, they have to combine into a super mesh.
Okay. Oh, right, right.
If I had a current source out here, it's okay, it's not between two meshes, it's just on the edge, so I I don't make a super mesh in that case. But since this is between two meshes, I have to make a super mesh. And I gained this equation when I did that.
And you just use KCL for that equation, right?
For this equation here, this equation here, I I got that because if you look at it, what did I erase? Um, if you look at it, right, so what's what's contributing, so we know that the current this way is fifteen I one, right, fifteen lowercase I one. So what's contributing to that? This I three is going in the same direction as it. And this I two is going in the opposite direction as it.
Right.
And we know that that's fifteen lowercase I one. And then separately, I also know that lowercase I one is a capital I one, because.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
So, okay, there's our equations, so let's uh, simplify a little bit. So that's going to be negative fifteen I, I'm doing the first equation, negative fifteen I one minus I two plus I three. Zero over there. Equals zero, okay, next equation. What are the I ones we have? We have ten, twenty, thirty, so sixty. I one, okay, what I twos do we have? Negative twenty, that's it. Negative twenty I two and I three is negative thirty. I three. Good. I did not have to be so far away, this is gonna be eighty there. Then we're gonna have for I ones on the next one, we have negative thirty, negative twenty, so negative fifty I one. Then for number two, we have plus twenty I two. And then for I threes, we have forty plus thirty, so seventy I three. Equals thirty. Okay, I will plug this into my calculator. How many unknowns? We have three unknowns, so negative fifteen, negative one, one, zero, sixty. Negative twenty, negative thirty, eighty, negative. Fifty, twenty, seventy, thirty. So I got I one equals. Zero point five eight four amps, or whatever, I'll just say it's zero point five eight four, I two. Is negative six point one five amps. And I three is. Two point six, uh, two point six, sixty, but yeah, two point six amps, okay, so there's our I's and now we're looking for VX. Okay, VX. V. V equals IR, okay, so. IR. Okay, what's the current? The current through this resistor. Um. Is. The current through this resistor in which direction, first of all, so in this direction. So the current in that direction is I one, cause I one's contributing in the correct direction, minus I three. Right, I one minus I three. Times thirty. So that's. Zero point five eighty four minus two point six. This is zero, times thirty, so. Zero point five eighty four. Minus two point six. Times thirty. So I got the voltage across that is minus sixty point five volts.
Hey, uh, I got a question about this example, so you see how I one? Yeah, I I was wondering if I one could be calculated by doing the voltage divided by the ten ohms. So could we assume that the voltage at that ten ohm resistor is eighty volts? And then I one would just be eighty over ten?
And we can assume that the voltage here is eighty. We don't know what the voltage here is.
Okay then.
Right, we can assume, this, this is what we can assume, we can assume that this node has a voltage of eighty. But that's about, that's all we can assume from that voltage source. We don't know that the voltage across that resistor is eighty. Okay, let's do number four, yeah.
Can you uh, can you explain why you said that I one equals to the big I one?
Uh, this, this mesh current here, I define it to be like this, right? So what's contributing to the current right here? The only thing contributing in the same direction is capital I one.
I didn't see that, yeah, awesome.
Um, okay, there's that, so any other questions about this one? Okay. Of course, you can ask me whenever. Let's take a look at number four then. So. Uh, do node analysis, node nodal analysis to find VX. VX is that. Okay. We can do this, so what nodes do we know? We know this node, this node, this node, this node, and this node. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four nodes. So this is V one, I guess I'll, I'll call this V two, V three, and V four, and then that's our ground at the bottom. So notably. What we're looking for, VX is V two minus V three. So I have to solve for V two and V three. Well, luckily, I kind, well, you know, just part of the question, I know that V three minus V four is equal to two VA. Right, V three minus V four is two VA, well, VA is V two, so. It's just how they label it.
Also, like a super node, almost.
Uh, yeah, exactly, and I'm gonna make a super node right now, right, so this is gonna become a super node. Well, actually, it's, the, this is the super node. And now, exactly, we gained an equation. In the form of this right here. That's our first equation, and now we're gonna um. Just go ahead and do the rest of the thing, so I have four unknowns, so I need four equations, so there's my first one. My second equation is gonna come from the super mesh and the next ones are gonna come from V one and V two. Um, I actually also know that V one equals thirty. So there's our second equation already. There's our second equation, so V one doesn't need any kind of analysis, so now we just need to do the current. KCL from V two and the super mesh, super node. So for V two, that's gonna be V two minus thirty over one, so just V two minus thirty. Plus V two over two. Plus V two minus V three over four. Equals zero. And now for the super mesh, and by super mesh, I mean super node, it's gonna be V three minus V two over four. Um, plus V four over sixteen minus three equals zero. Okay, and there is our four equations for unknowns, right, so this is number three and this is number four. Um, I guess technically, it's three, three unknowns, because I I I already subbed this in. So we we kinda don't have to worry about that anymore, so it's gonna be three equations, three unknowns. Uh, unless there's anyone, any other V ones here, no. So this is going to be minus two, like I said, put it like this, minus two V. So this is going to be minus two, I guess I should put it like this, minus two V one, uh V two. Plus V three minus V four equals zero. Uh yep, then for our second equation, which is gonna be our third equation, here, that's written, so. Oh yeah, there's no V one, sorry, I forgot, there's there's no V one, we know V one. So for V two, what do we have, we have one plus a half plus a quarter, so. Four quarters plus two quarters plus one quarter, so seven quarters. Seven quarters V two, and then what do we have for V three, V three is negative. Negative one over four V three. Yep, and that just equals thirty, now for this one, for V two, we just have negative a quarter V two. For V three, we just have a quarter. Not a third, a quarter. And for V four, we just have a sixteenth V four. And that equals three, so now we have three equations, three unknowns, we can solve this, oops. Uh number of unknowns is three, so that's negative two, one, negative one. Zero, seven over four, negative one over four, zero, thirty, negative one over, whoops. Negative one over four, one over four, one over sixteen. Three, so I get as my answer. V two equals. Twenty two point thirty four volts, V three equals um thirty six point forty one. Volts. And V four equals. Negative eight point two seven, uh twenty eight volts. I guess I'll say two seven six volts. Six volts, yeah, good. Okay, so there we go, that's V V two, well, V one, V two, V three, we know V one is is that, so well, to find V X, V X is V two minus V three. So that's twenty two point thirty four uh minus thirty six point forty one. So, um. Twenty two point thirty four minus thirty six point forty one is negative fourteen point oh seven. Volts. And there you go.
Okay, um I got a question, while I was solving this question, I had a different uh. Equation written down for node A, so you see how you got V A over there?
Yeah, yeah, which is my V two.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, your V two, so what I had written down was I had V A minus thirty. Uh plus V A over two, right, because.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and then plus V A minus V C. I I made an imaginary V C.
Okay, right after the thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh over four, so would that be okay if I use that equation and follow through with that?
The exact same thing is what I have, the exact same thing, it's just different variable names.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Right, that would be, unless unless you're seeing something that I'm not, but I think that's the same equation.
No, yeah, it's cuz when I, when you're follow through with your question, uh. I ended up getting different numbers, oh, I noticed that you have a minus three, I think that's where I messed up.
Minus three here?
Yeah.
For the super node, cuz it's three coming in, but we're asking for currents coming out.
So leaving is positive.
Leaving is positive, so it's negative three leaving.
I too, yeah, I think that's where I messed up.
I mean, you can set entering as positive, but then you have to set all the other currents to negative. Right, so it's easier to just say leaving is positive.
No, yeah, like literally all the equations that I've done are the same thing, except for that, just that plus three.
Yeah, so then that 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 will change the answer.
Yeah.
That's as if like you're just taking that current source and flipping it around, it it does change.
Exactly.
Right? Okay, any more questions for number four? Okay, I think we're good, I'm gonna go to number five, and this is actually the last question from midterm practice. Which will be a superposition, yes, which is a superposition problem. So we have two independent sources, draw two circuit configurations, draw the two circuit configurations required for a superposition, okay, let's do that first. So for part A. I'll call it part A like that, uh well, okay, what are the two circuits we have, let's leave the three volt for now, so the three volt stays. And uh the other um source goes away. So it will look like. That. I can draw numbers on, but I'll I'll just leave the numbers off, well, it might be useful for when we actually do. The um. Superposition, I don't know why that's labeled I, uh yeah, it doesn't need to be right now. Two ohms, uh and that's it, yes, okay, there's the first configuration, and then the second configuration is almost identical. So much so that I will copy and paste this one. The only difference is that now this. Oh, sorry. Um, that's gone. That looks like that, this is a short circuit here. Good, and. The current source is just right here. Two amps, there. Okay, so that's part A, part B is find V X one, or V X I. And I one due to the current source only, use only circuit reduction to find the unknown. So due to the current source only. So we're gonna use this circuit right here. And V X and I one. So V X is that point there and I one is like that, so this is I one and this is V X one, or I guess we can call it I prime and V X prime. Okay. So only circuit reduction is what we're allowed to do, which is okay. So let's identify the nodes, they're always useful to see, so this is a node, this is a node, and this is a node, nope. This is a node. So are any two things, oh, just to be clear, this, this is a node like that. Are any two things in. Series or parallel, looks like no.
Uh one and two are parallel?
One and two are parallel, yes, that's right, okay, thank you, so uh one plus a half is three halves, so two thirds. So we can replace this with a.
Actually, uh wouldn't three and one being series though? Because although it's not technically exclusive, it connects straight to a source though. So it should be okay, no?
They have the same nodes on both sides, they have the same node on both sides here. That means they're in parallel.
No, I'm I'm talking about the three and one.
Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't those be in series, yeah?
No, yeah, it would be one and two in parallel, that's in series of four, that's in parallel.
Oh, i- is it the two ohms that messes it up, that won't allow it?
Yeah, it doesn't, they don't, they don't exclusively touch this.
Okay, okay, then, alright.
Right, so yeah, it's not just that, yeah, so this will simplify into a two, wait, one plus a half is three halves, so two thirds, okay. So that's gone, that resistor is gone, can I erase this resistor, I cannot, so just forget about this resistor, so. Although maybe I should have put the resistor there. I guess maybe I should have put the resistor there, don't see that it really matters, but I'm still gonna do it. So this looks like that now, now there's no node there, so those can combine. So uh two thirds plus four is two thirds plus twelve thirds, so fourteen thirds, this is a fourteen. Thirteen thirds ohm resistor, which is. Which is in parallel with the three ohm resistor.
Yeah, they are.
I don't actually even have to do that now, actually, though, because all I need is the uh, I wanna know the the current this way. Yeah, I wanna know the current that way, so negative I prime is the current this way is the other resistor. Over the sum of the resistors. Uh times the current from the source. Okay, so then I prime is negative that, then. V X prime is the voltage there. How would I find the voltage there?
Uh if you do the par- remaining um parallel resistance, you just do ohms off.
Oh, and that'll, okay, I see, so then to combine these two, it would be one single. Resistor like that with our with our two amps, and that's gonna be uh three fourteenths plus a third. I can't do that in my head, three. Fourteenths plus a third, so forty two, what, and then and invert that, so forty two. Over twenty three ohm resistor. Now I can find the voltage across that, so V equals I R. So that is going to be uh just eighty four over twenty three volts. And that will be the voltage across this. So V X. Is V X just just eighty four over twenty three? Yeah, sorry, go for it.
Yeah, so I prime isn't just going to uh going through fourteen over three, right, it's going through um two over three. So wouldn't you have to do current division to find the I prime going through two over three?
Uh where's two over three, this this resistor is going down like that?
Uh yeah, that one's going down, so that's just gonna be like the the I prime that you found is gonna be the combination of four uh one and two over three, no?
Yeah, yeah, and the current going through that. They wouldn't have the same current, I guess, they wouldn't. Yeah.
Oh, I kinda see, okay, so you see over there where you have the two ohms? The the original circuit where you have the two ohms?
Yeah, here.
Okay, so now that if you look at the circuit below that, where you were trying to find I not. You didn't compensate for that two ohm, so you didn't do current division when it was necessary, you should have done it twice.
Yeah.
But I I all I did is I combined these resistors.
But then I prime isn't just going through the entire thing.
Because, cuz current and voltage in in it's in parallel are not the same, so that's why you should have con- so you should have. Calculated I not by thinking of the two ohms first. But that's still one in.
So this, so this is I, that's the current going into the parallel circuit, so then I. Not, or just I, whatever, was it I not, is that what you're looking for, whatever, I prime. Is going to be two over three times I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah, can can someone explain that, I'm kinda lost.
Yeah, 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 so what 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 I'm doing here is, okay, so I.
We got the two amps going down, right, from the. Uh that that's, I'm starting it from the from the current source.
Current source?
Yeah, so it's going down, and then it goes to the two amps, or also has an option to keep on going, past the two amps.
Two amps, well, what we're concerned about is this current, we don't really, we we don't really mind how it got there, yeah, it could it could have gone, I mean, it's. It could have gone like that, I guess, cuz the current source is facing upward, so I guess it could have gone like that, but what matters is what is the value of the current here? So we calculated the value of the current there by doing what, by combining. This, these two resistors into a. Into a. Fourteen over th- oh, well, actually, it was a something else over three, was it fourteen over? Well, combining all this into a fourteen over three ohm resistor. Right, including this, including this four ohm, I combined this and this, so this combined with this to some value and then add four to it, we get. The what we want, we get this fourteen over three, so then using current division. I know that two amps is coming here, a certain amount is going that way, a certain amount is going that way, right, so I wanna figure out the amount that's going this way. Which is gonna be the negative of the of what we want, right, so it's gonna be negative, the other. Resistance over the sum of the resistances times the current from the source.
So that current that you get, now you're doing current division between a one ohm and a two ohm?
Yeah, so now, now that I know that, so you understand that red arrow is this is this I here, right?
Yes.
That that red arrow is is this, so, oops, well, actually, I have to go, I have to undo more, so. So. Nope, that's as far as I can go back, okay, so this was um if I undo it, so it's gonna be one. This is going to be four ohms and this is going to be two ohms, okay, so I know that red current is uh this value here, oops. Or. I guess, well, I, okay, then then I have to draw this differently, so I don't actually know that red current, because I combined them again, so the the current going into both of the. Parallel resistors, so kind of like from here or. From.
I I was kind of following where you did the current division between the fourteen over three ohms and the three ohms, right? Cuz then you find the amount of current going into the, once you break, when you put the circuit back to how it was, that's the amount of current going into the four ohms. Right, technically, so now that you found that, now you're doing a current division between the one ohm and the two ohm. Right?
The one ohm and the two ohm, yeah.
Yeah, so then once you do that, you figure out how much current is going to the one ohm, and then you just do the minus of that, the negative of that, to find the current going in the opposite direction.
Yeah, this is essentially what the circuit turned into, just to see if that makes more sense. That's two amps.
Yeah, okay, okay, and then there would be a one at the top of that parallel and a two at the bottom of that parallel. And then there would be the four. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Red arrow, I know that red arrow, that's what we just calculated, right, that red current, so then the current going up here, which is what we actually care about. Which is I not prime, or I prime, it's called I prime, is gonna be two over the sum times the current going in, the red current. And there we go, so it'll be that, so I'll plug that in, so I. I prime. Is two thirds. Times negative three over. Three plus. Fourteen over two. Times two. So I get negative two fifth or negative negative zero point four amps, so that's I prime. And that's all we needed, there we go. And we also need the voltage, so. Yeah, so I prime is this, that's our first I prime, negative zero point four amps, that's right there. Um. Yeah, so then. We have. To find the voltage.
I, I'm so sorry, I just cuz I have to cut early, I was just wondering if you could go back to that one example where you had the matrix, and I just want to know if I got the same values real quick before I go. Uh yeah, so keep on going up.
Up, okay.
Uh yeah, no, no, a bit too up, so go back down, yeah, this question. Zero point five eight, oh, yeah, okay, same values, alright, I'm gonna have to head out.
Okay, okay, good luck tomorrow, good luck.
Thank you, you too.
Um, okay, so. Now we're looking, so we found I prime, we need to find V X prime. Oh yeah, then combine those two resistors. Give me one second. Okay, um so we combine these two resistors, oh, forty two over twenty three, I guess I did that right? Forty two over twenty three. Yeah, I'm just gonna check that again. It's gonna be uh three over fourteen. Plus a third inverted is forty-two over twenty-three. So now I can find the voltage, oh, I did that already, can find the voltage. Across. So the voltage across is eighty-four over twenty-three. So those two things were in parallel, so they have the same voltage, so they'll each have half the voltage. It doesn't really matter, we're just finding VX at this point. Um, it's the voltage at that point. Hold on, how do we find a voltage at a point if we don't have a? We do have a ground. This voltage is zero. Okay. There we go. So this is, this is, this is the ground. Didn't draw any grounds, this is the ground. And so now we know, since we know that the voltage across these resistors is eighty-four point twenty-three, we know that. VX minus zero is twenty four, uh eighty-four over twenty-three, so VX equals eighty-four over twenty-three volts. So it's VX prime. Okay. Now we gotta do the same thing, but with this to find VX prime, so let me just write this here, so this is VX double prime. And this is I double prime, let's hope that this doesn't. You know, I mean, actually, this is the time to have tricky questions, nevermind, I was gonna say, let's hope it's not too tricky, but. This is the best time for tricky questions. Let's see. Let's see um what we can do. Well, I know. Okay, I'll, it's good to identify nodes, so there is a node, there is a node, there is a node, and there is a node. So voltage there. Well, to find voltage there, I would need to know voltage either here or here, I go, I do know voltage here, I know voltage here is three volts. So I know VX minus three equals um something, I guess. I don't actually know what it equals, but it's equal to the voltage across um these resistors, so I think that's where we start.
Could add three and four. If we need to use reduction.
Three and four, yeah, okay, I see, so let's put seven there, I guess. And then. This would become one node. This would become one node. So. These are in parallel now. So one over seven plus one is eight over seven, right? Yeah, so seven over eight. So this is a. Seven over eight ohm resistor. Whoops, that wasn't good. Seven over eight, well, I guess I'll put the seven over eight here, so this is a seven over eight ohm resistor. So now I can find the voltage across this resistor by doing voltage division. So voltage division is gonna tell us that the first voltage is that resistance over the sum of the resistances. Times the voltage from the source, I'm pretty sure that's the formula. So this is uh sixteen over eight, so this is uh twenty-three over eight. Twenty-three over eight, so this is um twenty-one over twenty-three. Okay. Now that I know the voltage across that resistor. Yeah, I know the voltage across this resistor. I can find. Oh, I can find V two. So I can say. That's may help me, but.
Uh, if 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 you add the remaining resist, especially if you find the current.
Also finding the voltage didn't help me there?
Uh, I'll get, I think you'll need it. Like, I'm not sure, but I, you know, uh.
Okay, yeah. So the current coming, okay, okay, so then adding the current coming out, that's another. Oh, that was twenty-three over eight, we already know that, so twenty-three over eight. So this is going to be twenty-three over eight ohm resistor. Now I can say that uh the current equals three over twenty-three over eight. So this is three over. Twenty-three over eight, so that's twenty-four over twenty-three. Amps, so. What I know is the current out of this that's coming out here. So if I take a bunch of steps back now. Okay, if I take a bunch of steps back now. To this drawing. I know the current coming out here. Is twenty-four over twenty-three. So then I can do. Okay, again, this can just add to seven. This is the voltage division. So now I can just say. Yeah, now I can just say I double prime equals. Um, the other resistor over the sum times the current that we got out, which was twenty-four over twenty-three. So seven eighths of twenty-four over twenty-three is twenty-one over twenty-three. So that's I double prime, and now we need V double prime, so to find V double prime. I found the voltage. I know this voltage. I know the voltage across this resistor. Yeah, 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 I do need that, because look, voltage, I know the voltage across this resistor. So that'll be uh VX minus three is the voltage across the resistor, which I calculated to be twenty-one over twenty-three. So VX is twenty-one over twenty-three plus three. Ninety over twenty-three. I'm sorry, that's VX double prime. We can't check the answers, so I don't know if that's right, but that seems to make sense to me. This is the voltage difference that I calculated. So I know that voltage difference is twenty-one over twenty-three, so VX minus three is twenty-one over twenty-three, yeah, makes sense to me. Okay, and then find the total VX and I due to with the superposition principle, okay, so I equals I prime. Negative zero point four. Uh plus twenty-four over twenty-three. So twenty-four over twenty-three minus four point four. That gets me zero point six four three amps and VX is. Eighty-four over twenty-three. Plus ninety over twenty-three. Which is. Seventy-four over twenty, uh one seventy-four over twenty-three. Did I do that right? Yes. So I got seven point five six five uh volts. Okay, and there's my answer. Again, can't check if this is right, so.
Sorry, is that eighty-four over twenty-three or thirty-three?
Uh.
The first for VS.
Should be twenty-three, did I write thirty-three? Yeah, it should be, that's a twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, well then, uh that's that's the last question that I'm gonna do for today. We did the midterm and we did superposition practice. Um, how do people feel? How does everybody feel for the test tomorrow?
Um, for the graph, remember that graph question we did yesterday? Do you think it's gonna be similar to that?
Yes.
The on the midterm?
I think so.
Okay. Alright, then yeah.
I think that's what the great graph question is.
Alright.
Okay, well, I'm here for uh, you know, a few more minutes, so you know, asking, answering anybody's questions. But then, uh yeah, that's that's last, that's the last practice for all I'm gonna do for today, so, you know, good luck to everybody. I hope it goes well tomorrow. I hope uh, I hope you get the mark you'd like and. Okay, sounds like there's no more questions, I guess?
Hey, how's it going, Adam?
He's a shit bitch.